All right, good evening. This is the December 7th, 2022 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We will begin as we usually do with the approval of the agenda. Brian? We have a motion from Brian, a second from Denise. Any changes, discussion about the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was written? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Public comment? Anybody here for public comment this evening? No? All right. Then we will move on to the approval of the minutes. We have both regular and non-public minutes from November 16th. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November 16th.
I have a motion from Denise and a second from Brian for the minutes from November 16th. Are there corrections, Denise?
Yes, I have two. First of all, on page two, under the board comments, when I was talking about the mouth of the river, it should have said, and I believe this is what I said, was that community members could reach out to Sean Kelly to sign up to receive the mouth of the river. And then the second change is on page three. And it's under the budget discussion. And I really wanted, because I had kind of emphasized my concern about cutting the CIP too much. So I, before the last sentence in that discussion, what I'd like to insert is Denise Day stated she was worried that if the board cut the CIP too much, it would result in a bigger increase in 2024, 2025, when the largest bond payment, the largest bond payment increase occurs. And Wendy does have these changes.
Also on page three, in the budget discussion section, I would like to just strike the second sentence. I don't know what I exactly said, and I don't know exactly what that means. This considerable loss in revenue does not match the level of responsibility the board felt they had covered. So I'd just like to remove that sentence altogether from the minutes. Others? With those three corrections, all those in favor of the minutes from, regular minutes from November 16th? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. And we have the non-public minutes? Yes, Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from November 16th.
Motion from Denise, a second from Brian. A discussion on the non-public minutes? All those in favor of the non-public minutes from November 16th? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
Good evening. David Goldsmith, Moheramit. Just a few announcements. One, two that have already happened and two that are upcoming. One, at the, last week, we had our last year of the forest assembly, sort of November-December assembly, which was really fantastic. Ellen Irvin, our math-science specialist, worked with all of the third and fourth grade classes to help them present a play to the rest of the school, all about what they've learned this fall through their science work and their nature journaling and their globe projects through the UNH globe project. It was a great assembly, and so it was really exciting for the whole school. Today, and I'm sure you'll hear more about this, was Hour of Code across the world, actually. And of course, we took part of that, took part in that. Our tech integrators organized that throughout the whole district. We had a lot of volunteers from Liberty Mutual and from the shipyard, big thanks to both of them as well. And what I think is the coolest part of the day is that our classrooms have teams calls with different high school and middle school students from the district who are there to help our students with their programming and coding issues. So I would see in a classroom a kindergartner walking up with her iPad to the screen and talking with a high school student about what she was trying to do to move the object that she was coding, and the high school or the middle school students are helping the students out. It's just an amazing connection to see going on in our district and especially being made across teams, which we can now do. We have two upcoming events this month at Moheramit that are pretty exciting. One, on the 15th, we're having our fourth grade chorus concert in this room. We're really excited to be able to do that and have that come back. Our third graders in the past have had a concert out on the same night. This year, we're doing something a little, this year, we're doing something a little different. They're going to have their concert in February, and it's going to be an international music and dance festival that they're going to be singing about. And then we're, on the 22nd, we're welcoming the festival band and the jazz band from the middle school to Moheramit, Antemastway, to perform some songs for our students. And then our fourth grade chorus is going to sing for some of that as well. So we just have a lot of nice enrichment and curricular activities going on this month that I wanted to share with you. Questions, thoughts, comments? Cool.
Good evening. Misty Lowe, Massway School. Some of the things David shared, I might echo a little bit differently. First, for Mastway, the school-wide theme is communication, and we had a fun skit led by staff, a full-school assembly to introduce our communication theme, which was exciting. Mastway is really working hard on restorative practices. My day began, actually, with a restorative circle with our staff during one of our staff meetings. Open circle continues at the classroom level. And last night, I want to give kudos to those. And Denise, I believe you and Heather were in attendance at an open-circle parent night, which was a great way to start extending what we're doing in the schoolhouse to the full-school community. So that was great. I believe we have a school visiting in the near future that is going to come and look at the elementary schools and the middle school to learn more about our restorative practices, open circle, things of that nature. So that's really exciting. Another fun thing that happened today besides also coding and cocoa, I don't know, David, if the cocoa is as important at Moheramit as it is at Mastway, but the cocoa and the candy canes and the marshmallows are a lot of the fun that goes with the coding for the children. And again, a shout-out to parent volunteers, teachers, staff, those high school students. It is really remarkable to see that happen. As well as the shipyard, who gave all of our elementary students a free cool robot to take for their homes, which was really quite amazing. Then this evening, right before the school board meeting, I had the most fun downtown in Durham at the Clark's American Bistro where our PTO had a fundraiser. And so it was fun for my husband and son and I to sit and have dinner this evening with a lot of parents, teachers, students. That was a fun event downtown and again, a fundraiser for Mastway School. We too have a winter concert coming from Mastway. It is grade three and four, right here, on the 14th of December. And I know Doris is also going to be working hard to take collections for N68 at those concerts. So I just wanted the community to know that. Our first grade and our kindergarten will be going into long-term facilities for folks to sing carols, share gingerbread houses, share, you know, share the holiday with those families. So the families that are, they're going to Brookdale, Sprucewood, as well as Harmony Homes. So that's an exciting thing coming up. And then on December 14th, much like Moheramit, the middle school jazz band, festival band, will be visiting Mastway School, as well as the middle school and high school chorus, who plan to come and do a fun holiday sing-along with the kids. So it's always fun to have company, especially when it's students who attended Mastway in the past. They love coming back to their old school. Awesome. I'm not sure how late Clark's is open, but maybe you could still get a to-go order.
Good evening. Jerry Shad, principal of the middle school. They already talked about the coding and cocoa. We had a blast today. I actually personally saw nine out of 10 teams. Students were super engaged. One of the comments was, you, the school was totally quiet for an hour, and that's unique, particularly in the morning. Janet Martel did a fabulous job creating the schedule. One of our heroes of the day was our day custodian key, who, we had several big spills in the learning commons, you know, middle school students spilled things. Heather got to check it out, so we had several volunteers. So thank you, was very successful. And one of the things I often like to tell the kids, you know, you could be the next one who creates the next big program. That's a big deal. That's how it starts with software. So there was just a great morning. Our strings concert is tomorrow night, right in the space. That's grade six through eight. The kids are really excited with the cocoa going on. We also had kids rehearsing, so it was, again, it was an exciting morning. Kids are really excited, and I can, know I can speak for Mrs. Barnoy, and she's really excited for the kids to get to show what they've learned this fall. Big deal, again, this Saturday, we host a robotics tournament. We actually have 12 programs from the state of New Hampshire coming to visit us. I look forward to seeing that. And I just learned today, we actually have two teams from Massachusetts that's joining us, so we just found out. So we're up to 14 different programs. So that's going to be a fun-packed day. And I also want to, in advance, shout-out to the high school robotics program, who's going to be here volunteering, helping referee the matches, as well as doing some fundraising. They'll be doing pizza up on the second floor in our kitchen setup. So again, it's a great example of this new facility and what we can offer our programs and provide to visiting teams. And lastly, I've been putting out, you know, if you can see the loss and find out there, we have a loss, a lot of loss that needs to be found, and those items will be donated to charity over the holiday break.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal at the high school. First, I'd like to start off with talking about our students that made it into the Classical All-State Festival. And so Mary Jeong, Cole Norris, Alana Pavlik, Isaac Williams, Sasju Svarvatsen, Sidhu Svarvatsen, Peter Weirda, Courtney Gru, and Ella Higginson, and Micah Bissett were all students that made it into Classical All-State. And we'll have Jazz All-State news coming soon, so we are extremely proud of them. Also, Paige is going to talk about coding and cocoa, but I do want to give a shout-out to Celeste Best, our digital learning specialist in the NHS, who worked extremely hard to put this together. She works weeks ahead of time, putting, getting connections with the high schools and elementary schools, putting things in place. We had the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard come to the NPR, too, also. And so Paige will talk about details about that, but she did an amazing job with the kids today. Winter sports have started, so a lot of jamborees going on, and a lot of kids, three of our teams went and did some team building and jamborees over the past weekend, which was really, really nice for them to be able to do overnight trips again. One change, December 13th, we're having our first parent session of the year. Last year, we did a three-part series. This year, we're creating a three-part series also. So December 13th, it was going to be at 6:30. We moved it back to 6:00 PM because the middle school has a concert, so we want to make sure any parents that need to go to both are able to go to both events. So December 13th at 6:00 PM, it's Vaping Alcohol Drugs in Teens, and it's a presentation by Officer Nicolosi and Britta Bartlet, our lead act. And so she is actually going to be out on maternity leave right after the holidays, so it was very good timing to be able to get this done in early December. And then the last note for now, our teachers work extremely hard, and I know we are doing a lot of work with Vision Number Graduate. We are doing a lot of work with aligning and looking at our competencies, just hard work in the classrooms, working with kids, engaging children. And so we decided that this year, we're going to make our own ORHS Teacher Appreciation Week. And so the last week of December, before the break, we just have little activities and little things planned for them throughout that week. So just something fun to show them, I hope, that, how much we appreciate all of the hard work that they do. Any questions?
Is the vaping event in person or online like it was last year?
It is in person in the auditorium. Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right. And announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Denise?
I did attend the open circle presentation last night, and it was, it was great. It was fun, too. We actually were in a circle, and we got to participate in a couple of activities so that we'd have a sense of what the students actually experienced. And so a great shout-out to Felicia Speary and the other members of the SEL leadership team, and the other teachers that were, were here to help, to talk about how it works in their classrooms. It was, it was a great, a great night. Thank you.
So I will second what Denise just said. It was a very informative session, and I really like personally coming to the SEL information sessions. We've had PTOs that have done them. This is the first one. They've done specific to open circle. And I find them really informative, just not just learning the vocabulary, what they use in the classroom, but also sort of being able to take those lessons and apply them to myself, or take them and continue trying to apply them at home. And, you know, my kids didn't come with an instruction manual, so I'm going to take all the help I can get. And these sessions have been really great in sort of understanding what they talk about at school and how you can make that transition to home, and how that consistency can help regulate sort of everyone. And I find them incredibly helpful. So if you're out there listening, and we're going to have another one, try to make it. They're great. And the brownies were very tasty as well, because they're treats. And then the other thing is, I took the tech integrators up on their very gracious offer to come see coding and cocoa today. I made it to three of the schools. So I started the day off at the middle school and got to see all the classrooms working on their coding. And they, Janet had a group of kids running tech support for the middle school kids when they were doing the coding to sort of help them if they got stuck on their coding. And then when the elementary schools kicked off, there were groups that were then doing tech support for the elementary schools, and it was adorable and really fantastic. And I went to Moheramit and saw some of the volunteers there helping and saw the little kids. And as David said, the kindergarteners with the, the teams call-up with the middle schoolers up on the Promethean Board, and the little kids holding up their iPads, and why doesn't my code work? And that was really, really awesome. Everybody was super engaged. And then I went to the high school, and I didn't see anybody coding because it was the high school, and there's just so much movement every time there during the day. There's just so much movement. But I will tell you, Misty, the cocoa was important because Celeste Best was turning people away at the door until they had their completion certificate for having their Hour of Code done. And there was a lot of nope, see ya, until they got it done. So it was really great. The first team was there, as, as Noe said. So a really great day, a lot of people really intrigued with coding and doing stuff, and it was really great to see. So thanks to the tech integrators for having invited us, and I had a great time.
Others from the board? All right. That brings us to district reports.
Good evening. I want to first begin by telling you a little bit about some changes that have been made to the state graduation requirements. So there are two new changes that the state legislature has made changes to for graduation. And Rebecca Noe and I will be sending notification of that to families next week also. And the first is the civics instruction and assessment. There is a requirement now that all students that graduate need to have passed a local assessment for civics, as created, locally-created assessment, and with competencies related to civics. And then they also need to pass the naturalization examination that is given by the, that is created by the United States Citizen and Immigration Services. And so Noe, as Mrs. Noe, and the social studies department has been working together to ensure that they have all of the needed tests and all of the needed documentation to be able to demonstrate that students have passed those in order to graduate. That will begin in 2024. So the juniors this year that are taking citizens' education have started that process to ensure by the time that they're seniors next year and they reach graduation that they've had multiple opportunities to learn the material and to successfully complete that assessment. So we will be sending some information home to families about that, and the, if families have, if they have questions or concerns about that, we encourage them to reach out to Mrs. Noe, as well as the social studies department, and if their students enrolled in, in a course in social studies. The other change is the personal finance requirement, and that is a personal finance literacy requirement. That's a new graduation requirement that also will begin in, for the graduating class of 2024. We don't have specific technical guidance around that yet, so what we do know is that there will need to be personal, standalone personal finance experience that students complete in order to graduate. What that looks like is what we're, we're working on right now. And again, we'll have more information once we receive that information from the state as far as what, what's possible. It's possible that it could be a standalone course that runs alongside economics. And so students are required to take, to take economics for graduation, and now they'll also be required to take some sort of personal finance as well. So that will, that has the possibility of impacting the electives at the high school and the number of elective students will have access to, if it is, if it needs to be a standalone course. So that, that information will also go home to families. And again, as we receive more information about that, we will notify people. Counselors are aware. The Mrs. Karen, the director of the counseling department, is very aware, and Mrs. Noe and I have had many conversations about, about both of these things. And so we'll continue those conversations and continue to notify people as we get more information. Does anyone have any questions about that? Denise?
So as far as the, the exams that the students need to take regarding the naturalization and the civic instructions, so when is the first opportunity they will have to take those exams? Is it the sort of thing that when they're taking civics, they will automatically take that test? Is that how it will work?
Yeah, so the kids are required to take the citizens' education course for graduation, their junior year. It's a, it is a one-semester course. And so students will begin to, they will have multiple opportunities throughout that citizens' education course to take portions of the, portions of the test. So the, the way that the faculty have worked the, the examination is that it works with the curriculum. So as they're teaching, they will give, they will give the students the part of the exam that is appropriate according to, according to what they've learned, and then they'll continue to do that. So the students won't sit down and take the whole exam in one sitting. They'll be taking portions of it as they, as they learn the material. And then if students struggle with any, just like with other assessments, they can relearn and reassess. So the students will continue to relearn and reassess, and if need be, they can continue to do that into their senior year as well. It does not mean that, just, they don't have to complete it within their time with citizen education, that semester course. If they need more time, then they will be given that time.
I can't remember, what, what other examinations are required for graduation?
There are none.
So this, these, these are the, I thought that's what I thought. So the civics and the naturalization examers are the only required exams in New Hampshire for graduation?
Yes, there, we have required courses for completion, and then the local assessments that are part of those courses to demonstrate competency, but this is the first time that there's an external examination that we're required to give to students. So I have the pleasure of introducing Landon Wolf. He's going to be speaking with you this evening about the Hugh O'Brien Youth Foundation. The Hugh O'Brien Youth Foundation sponsors a leadership seminar for outstanding high school sophomores. Schools nominate one sophomore to, that demonstrates leadership qualities or the potential for leadership qualities, and the Oyster River faculty nominated Landon last year as, when he was a sophomore. He's now a junior. And I'm very pleased to have him come up and to share his experience with all of you. This is part of the presentation series that has been going on at the high school to faculty during faculty meetings to talk about Imagine the Possibilities, which is their theme for the year.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So like Ms. Philippone said, my name is Landon Wolf, and I am a junior at Oyster River High School. And I just, tonight, wanted to briefly discuss my experience at the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar, or HOBE for short. So first of all, I'm going to talk about the basics of what HOBE is. I have a slide up here. So it was first founded in 1958 by Hugh O'Brien after a remote trip in Africa, which was about a week, six days, seven days, where he met Dr. Albert Schweitzer, who was a Nobel Peace Prize winner, and he was running a remote medical clinic in this remote area in Africa. And O'Brien was able to participate in these activities that aided Dr. Albert Schweitzer, and was able to pick up on different leadership tactics. And after this one-week experience, Dr. Schweitzer looked at O'Brien and said, what are you going to do with this information? Schweitzer didn't want these leadership concepts to die in this remote area in Africa. He wanted them to be carried on for posterity for future generations around the world. So after his return to America, he established the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Organization, which, as we said, promotes the development of leadership skills in young adults, and it is a nonprofit organization. So in terms of what I learned from HOBE, it's a three-day, two-night seminar. So each day is parceled into a specific type of leadership. So on our first day, it was mainly focused on individual leadership, so those concepts that you can build for yourself, acting as the underpinnings for different applications of leadership when you're talking about group, group or community leadership. The second day was more focusing on the group leadership, which was more hands-on, which we'll get into in a bit. And then our third day was the more holistic approach towards applying all of what we've learned and seeing how we can benefit our communities, local to us and around us. So like I said, my experience at the seminar allowed me to zero-in on these individual, group, and holistic leadership skills. And also, after this three-day leadership seminar, HOBE challenges alumni to complete at least 100 hours of extra volunteer service, which allows for a, an extension of being able to show the concepts that you've learned and applying them to your, to your community. So these are a few pictures from the seminar. This is from the first day. On the right picture, they are split into groups, and these groups were our individual groups that the leadership seminar put us into. And this group was, were individuals, about, about 10 individuals that you stuck with throughout the whole seminar. So it allowed you to not only learn those leadership skills, whether it's individual or group, and then apply them to those small groups to gain a sense of what you've learned. So this was the first day. So this is, this was the fundamentals of leadership skills, as you can see on the left picture. So this was, this was largely preliminary introduction into the seminar. And then on the second day, like I said, this was more of a group approach, and we went to the New Hampshire Food Bank, which applies virtually all of the crops for, not only the New Hampshire Food Bank, but for the Juvenile Detention Center, which was across the road. And this was a job that was executed after two years of the garden not being tended whatsoever due to COVID-19. So the, the garden was neglected for two years, which, this is an after picture on the left. But before this, a lot of the plants were about eight feet tall once you were in the trenches. So there was little to no tending to them throughout these two years. So that was one challenge in and of itself. And then, secondly, being able to work with your peers and your groups, like we discussed, and other groups around you, really showed how these leadership skills can be applied into our, in our group aspect. And then in terms of what, how I benefited from this experience, so like I said, there was numerous opportunities to work with others around me that shared similar beliefs, but also those that shared beliefs that our group, or me in particular, did not see or associate with, which I believe is very important since you're being exposed to ideas and concepts that you wouldn't normally be exposed to, which is something that I believe HOBE provided an extension for. And many of these people who I've met, I still stay in contact with, which is one of the main goals of the seminar, is to be able to communicate with those that you learned at your state seminar and collaborate with new projects to affect those communities on a more broader scale. Secondly, realizing that impact a smaller form of leadership can have within my community and others through service learning was a staple, since those underpinnings of individual leadership really do formulate that broad holistic approach toward leadership. And then lastly, being able to participate in activities that introduced problem-solving skills and more comprehensive approaches of local issues was another staple that we talked about. was another staple that we talked about and I believe that I garnered from the seminar. And then, lastly, these are just a few pictures from throughout the seminar, different days, different activities, just a look inside the seminar itself. But as of the presentation, that is it. But I am open to any questions whatsoever.
Sounds like an incredible experience. I'm so glad that you're sharing it with us and with the school community. You mentioned takeaway number three was understanding how enhanced problem-solving skills could help you tackle local issues. And I'm curious which local issues you brought into the week or that you're particularly passionate about now?
Yeah, so as of now, a lot of the issues that, or the volunteering opportunities that I navigate to have been more school-based and my local community-based. So like we were talking about today, the coding and cocoa event was just one area of volunteering that could be done to start to formulate a more, let's say like a linear approach to being able to build off smaller leadership skills, applying them into larger areas. So as of right now, a lot of the concepts that I brought into the seminar and that I'm still trying to apply now are focused on this school district. But then, once I'm able to participate in these acts of volunteering, being able to open up and work with others into other communities is something that I'm looking forward to and I'm hoping to do, so. All right. Thank you, everybody.
I have a question for you. This one's an easy one, though. Where was the, I want to say camp, but it's not a camp. Where was the experience?
Yeah, it was in Manchester.
Nice. And then the picture up there, as an Ohio State grad, I see everybody doing the O. And I like, I want to, I H I O, it's driving me crazy.
Yeah, so those are one of the chants that you do, which was another way that they, the seminar tried to pull in some sort of leadership within groups. So in this case, this was the opportunity chant. So there's different chants that you, that sometimes they'll just randomly call out the facilitators, which will allow you to take a break from whatever you're doing and work with those around you just to increase morale, which was another aspect of the seminar, which was pretty cool.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent?
So W.C. Field said, "Never follow a kid" in his movie career. So very briefly, I do want to mention Mike Hope being the runner-up in our area for healthcare hero, which was pretty cool from the middle school. Mike is a relatively young man, has been working for the district probably three or four years, has contributed mightily to the health office and the middle school and is actually very beloved by the students, so is well-deserved. And then, just in terms of practical issues, when we built the calendar for this year, we did not make a mention of the 23rd being a half day. Traditionally, it is the day before we break. And since it was a calendar issue, I didn't feel like I had the authority to do it after the fact. So I'm bringing it back to the board for consideration tonight.
Denise?
Like to make a motion to approve December 23rd as an early release day?
A second from Brian. Any discussion about this? All right, all those in favor of approving December 23rd as an early release day? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. We'll make that change.
Thank you. That is it, Michael, for this evening.
All right. Business administrator? Save it for the budget discussion, all right? And then Paige?
Yeah, so I won't talk much more about coding and cocoa, but I will just say that it's a really cool experience. I enjoy it every year. I think it's really cool that we're able to kind of do the same activity at all three building levels at an age-appropriate level. So that's always really fun. And I will say that the cocoa was just as important at the high school as it was at the other schools. And it was also really nice because Dr. Morris and Ms. Philopone had a little introductory video, and I thought that was really cool just because I don't think the student body always gets to see them, so that was really nice. Clue, the fall play, was a success. It was really funny. And I just want to give a shout out to the cast and crew that that was really amazing. The spring musical is going to be Beauty and the Beast, so I'm also really excited to see that. The high school music concert is going to be December 20th here at the middle school recital hall. I'm excited for that also because we're collaborating with the middle school band on one of those songs. That's going to be really fun. And then the food drive is still going on for N68 Hours of Hunger. So advisories are still doing our competitions to get the most food items before the holidays, so.
If I could just add to Paige's presentation, for whatever reason, I could not say Suzanne's name on tape. And we taped that probably 12 times. Finally, I gave up and said Suzanne, no, Suzanne said to me, "Do you mind if I introduce myself?" It's perfect. And we promised, the kids promised us they would not use any of our outtakes. It was a riot doing it. And it was just the simplest thing. I couldn't get her name out. It was so frustrating. So it was fun doing that.
It turned out really good, so.
I really do want to see those outtakes. That'd be great. Paige, what day was the band concert again?
The band concert is going to be December 20th.
All right. I don't think there's a finance committee report tonight. We'll have the budget discussion a little bit later. So then we have unanimous consent. We have two items here. Would anybody like to discuss any of these separately? Denise?
Yes, I'd like to pull out the first. I believe it's the first one. Yes, right, yeah. Just the motion to approve the leave starting on December 22nd, just for a question.
We'll take that up at the start of the discussion items. Others? All right, so then I will move for approval of the other item in unanimous consent agenda, which is motion to extend the middle school maternity leave of absence previously approved to the end of the school year. So previous leave of absence, approving it out to the end of the school year. A second from Matt. All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor? All right. Thank you. All right, so now we're on to discussion and action items, and we'll start with that maternity leave item.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Where is the lead act position? I'm just wondering how those services will be provided for the period of time that she's out on maternity leave?
So we are getting ahold of the lead act from last year, who is able to do it virtually for two hours a day to see if she'd be willing to do that for the few months that Britta would be gone. So Mrs. Karen is working with her.
All right. So then are we ready for a, okay. So I'll move to approve the high school maternity leave of absence from December 22nd to March 31st, 2023. And a second from Denise. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. That maternity leave is also approved. All right. Next up is the calendar for the next school year for initial review.
Yeah, so as you all know, calendars always become problematic. And one of the things that happened in this past legislature is that the legislature required that school systems align their calendar with their CTE center with no more than 10 conflicts. It assumes that you have one CTE center. We have three. And so it becomes impossible to align. If the three CTE centers don't align, which you can see they do not, then it's impossible for us to align with all of them. So just to give you a sense of why I always favored Dover, it isn't geography, it's the number of students who choose that CTE center. So as of today, we have 57 students who are in Dover, nine who are in Rochester, and nine who are in Somersworth. It's not to dismiss Rochester or Somersworth, but we have to favor one. We should favor the one that has the predominant number of Oyster River students. So in each case, Oyster River does a pretty good job of aligning with the three centers. Four days out of alignment with Dover, four days out of alignment with Rochester, and six days out of alignment with Somersworth. What causes the misalignment has nothing to do with the intentions of the school systems to work together. We, all four school systems have different start dates. They have different emphasis in their contracts. Some have very specific language related to when and when they can't do things. We're fortunate that we have a consult model with our guild and, but other school systems have very specific language they have to meet. So not just these four systems, but also Barrington and Nottingham and Northwood, we met collectively now twice. And we worked right off the state calendar. And so I think that as a first blush, this is as good as we've ever been in terms of presenting a first review of the calendar to all of you that is as aligned as possible and follows the state calendar exactly in terms of February, April vacation. That blue line in the comparison is really, above that line is before Labor Day and it's professional development time, so it doesn't mix into the comparison. Blue, the blue line is where the student data is. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Brian?
I know as we get into 2024, I know it's tough because it's so far ahead of where we are today. I see a teacher's workshop on the 13th of February. I assume that we're assuming that's going to be a voting day until, now it's all kind of up in the air, so.
Until we know that.
I mean, will we look at possibly moving that to a teacher's workshop to match whatever that day happens to be?
Yes, placeholder, and I'll come back to you because it's a calendar issue once we know.
I see that that day is listed as a no-school day for all for us and the three CTE centers. I assume that's all the same reason?
All the same reason.
They would move in concert if they did.
The issue that drives us is Mastway and Lee and Durham use our facilities for voting. That happens in Dover and other school systems as well. So if you're a school system that uses your schoolhouses for voting, then you have to align. And if you're not, you know, they tend to follow what the others are doing.
And even though there are several conflict days, there's really conflict days when Oyster River has school and the CTE does not, don't matter as much, I think, right? Because the students aren't missing CTE content. So, and then do we have any students that would attend multiple CTE locations?
I don't think it's possible, Michael, because of the travel.
Right, okay.
We do occasionally have somebody who goes to Exeter. We don't right now. But that would only be if a program wasn't being offered in any of the other three.
So the most we have is three days of where Somersworth would have school that Oyster River does not in this calendar?
Calendars are always complex, so it's one of the reasons I'm not a fan.
It looks like there's only one day where Dover has school that Oyster River does not.
I think that's accurate, Michael.
I'm less concerned about the days that Oyster River has school and Dover does not.
I just want to commend Wendy for putting this particular slide together because she had to tear apart every single calendar in order to make this make sense. And she's just amazing.
Yes, that is very helpful to see it that way. So are you looking for a motion on this today or is this informational at this point?
It's your call. If you feel comfortable with what you have, you can make a motion. If you wanted, come back as a second read. We can do that.
Brian?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do we typically treat the calendar as a two-read?
Typically.
Item, so for a first read? All right, so a motion from Brian for first read on the 2023-24 school calendar. And a second from Matt. Any more discussion?
It looks like the 23-24 holidays have been updated, which is great. Have those been cross-referenced with the school calendars?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of approval of the 23- All those in favor of approval of the 23-24 calendar for first review, first read? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor?
You see just clarification. Were you talking about holidays or holy days? Religious holidays, okay. We didn't do that yet. I'll do that for the second read. This is just making it as aligned as much as with the other systems. So if we see anything that stands out, we'll know that in the second read.
All right. Next up is the high school- Next up is the high school graduation date for this year.
All right, good evening again. So I would like to formally request that graduation be on Friday, June 9th, at 6:00 PM on the Todd Allen Track and Field Complex.
All right. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve June 9th as the high school graduation date.
A second, a motion from Denise and a second from Brian? Discussion? Heather?
What is the last day for seniors?
Oh, that would, they come in for practices that week, and so hold on.
Yeah, it's the last, I guess, the last academic day.
The Friday before. I'd have to look at a calendar. Yes, as we're counting backwards.
Dan?
Can I safely assume we're also approving the rain date of June 10th as presented?
So that would be the request. We have calls into the NHIA, and I double-checked with Andy today. As of right now, they have not determined a time for New England Track and Field. But they did say it's usually in the morning. And so Andy's opinion is it probably won't affect a rain date time of 6:00 PM. But we'll have that for sure as soon as they let us know. But that would be where, if it was going to affect, that we would move it later that evening.
We've had this issue in the past where the competition is on the same day as the rain date, and we just adjust the time so the kids can do both.
So Denise and Brian, are we including the rain date in the motion?
Sure.
Okay. All right, other discussion? Paige, is this, what do you think of this graduation date?
I think it sounds good. I think it's really good that it works out with the track and field, so, yeah, it sounds great.
All right. All those in favor for approving Friday, June 9th, at 6:00 PM with a rain date of Saturday, June 10th, as the high school graduation date for the class of 23? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. We have a graduation date.
Thank you.
All right, and next up is the fiscal year 2024 budget. Brian, Jim, or one of you want to describe what we have in front of us? Because we have a couple of new ways of looking at this from what we looked at three weeks ago. Or Sue.
So I think you have a spreadsheet with different options, correct? Is that what you're referring to?
We have a spreadsheet and then we have a memo, a budget summary memo from Dr. Morris.
So I can do the memo and you can do the spreadsheet?
Sure, sounds good.
When we left the workshop, the board was contemplating several options. One was 1.5%, and the other was 1.4%. We, the board had a pretty healthy discussion about priorities, wanting to see field trips increased in the budget, wanting a second bus included in the budget, and wanting safety funds included in the budget. And then, at the end of the meeting, I was quite embarrassed in a conversation with Josh and Matt where I realized I had misread a memo from Josh that day and I had inadvertently cut $35,000 from the tech oversight. So at 1.5% or $132,347, we can reach the 1.5% and meet the board's, not goals, but the priorities that you had in the workshop by including $18,000 for field trips, reinstating the $40,000- reinstating the $40,000 for the bus, including $39,347 for safety items, and reinstating the $35,000, and that comes to $132,347. When we got to this, the superintendent's search fund money is actually in the budget under the consultant line of the superintendent's budget. And so we can, we've lowered that from $40,000 to $25,000. We have two entities that are willing to do our search, and both of them came in well under $40,000. And we'll be talking about that in January, but we can pay for the superintendent's search from the contracted service line of the superintendent's budget. So that takes care of that $25,000 without impacting the 1.5% increase. So if the board wants to, of course, I'm reading the tea leaves when I write a memo like this, and it's totally up to the seven of you how you want to shuffle the funds tonight. And tonight is our goal night for making these decisions because it takes a bit for Sue to have all the warrants reviewed and to get the budget documents ready and so forth. So we are hopeful that you can make your final decision tonight. Sue, do you want to attack the spreadsheet?
Sure. Actually, Michael, I think you developed the spreadsheet, and I just put in the numbers in some cases. So actually, we started with our first proposal, and then we had different scenarios, the 3%, then the 1.05%. We also went through, I don't know if you want me to go through each one line by line, but whether or not we use 550 in the contingency fund, whether or not we use 300 in the contingency fund. So those are all the different options. The tax rates to the right, reflected with each option. The total budget increases in, in one of the columns, so you can see how much money we're talking about. Again, all of the tax rates assume no increase in valuation, so that will impact those, hopefully bringing them down a little lower. Specific questions, comments? Denise?
Just under the total budget, oh wait, that's the percent increase. Never mind, I figured it out. Thank you.
We did include one, the 1.4, because I think that was what UC suggested, so we included that in there too, so we could see what that looks like as another option.
I'll make a motion to approve for the budget to 1.5% with the fund 10 amount of $51,679,884.
A motion from Brian and a second from UC for what amounts to scenario six on the spreadsheet, which is the 1.5% scenario. And that would include the items that were noted in Dr. Morse's memo in that case. Okay. And that, that item, that, that scenario includes use of $550,000 from the contingency fund.
But potential use if we have fund balance greater than the $500,000 that's already in the revenue side of the spreadsheet? Would bring that number down?
Would bring that number down, correct.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second on, on scenario six. All right, here we note further discussion. Asking for a vote, all in favor of approving scenario six, the 1.5% increase for a total budget of $53,211 and $98 for the next school year?
No, that's not, that's not what I said. You're, you're going to the total budget, the fund 10 budget that we decide on. We decide on the fund 10 budget.
Do we, so then I'm going to have to ask, is that all we, in the past, I thought we had voted on the total budget.
No, we only, you only have.
You will when you do the warrant. Right? This is just to prepare the warrant. Then when you do the warrant, we'll bring the warrant back and you'll vote on what goes on the warrant too.
Okay.
So which will break it down.
This is the only one that's appropriated from taxpayer funds.
Right.
Funds, so that's why we only have control over fund 10.
Okay, they all show up on the warrant, so.
But they do, yes, they do, but we don't.
Yep.
Yeah, but for this purpose.
Okay, so, and, and we're all talking about the same line.
Yes.
So, all in favor of, so I'm asking for a vote on the motion, which was for approval of scenario six, which is a 1.5% increase to a fund 10 amount of $51,679,884. All in favor of that? We have seven in favor and the student rep in favor, so we have a fiscal year 24 budget.
Great, thank you.
All right. Next up is the retirement incentive.
I'll speak to that as well, Michael. In terms of our discussion and workshop about ways that we can lower the budget to 1.5% is, is by lowering our personnel costs. And we've used retirement incentive in the past to do that, and it's been very successful in terms of controlling our costs. And so I would recommend that the board support a retirement incentive for up to 12 people this year. And Michael, a question for you is this, should we include up to 12 people for the following year in the same motion, or do you want to wait on that?
My opinion is that we should not.
Keep it just.
Make a decision about the following year.
Okay.
At this point.
All right, so it's for this, for this, for this, this year?
My, my question is, do we need to distinguish between positions offered through the guild retirement incentive and positions offered to other staff that are not covered by the contract?
That's a really good question, Michael. I was thinking about the guild, and there are other professionals who could benefit by the retirement incentive, so up to 12 would be for guild-related retirements. And then I would just simply say others at the discretion of the superintendent, because I don't know, it would be very a funky motion because they would come from across the district. So that's how I would suggest wording it.
All right, all right. Brian?
Are we capping it at 12? Is that what you're saying, or?
For this year, no more than, no more than 12.
So even if someone from outside the guild, it's still 12?
No, 12 with the guild. It's a guild motion. That's what Michael was clarifying.
All right. But are we going to offer it to anyone outside the guild, which will bring us to above 12?
Yes, I would like to, because, I mean, the bottom line here is always, does it benefit the system and does it benefit an individual? And so the, if you have professionals outside of the guild who would want to retire, then it makes sense to allow them to with the same incentive. The hard part is when lower-paid employees want an incentive, there's no benefit to the district because there's no differential in, not much of a differential, I should say, in hiring support staff. We've tried that before, and it really doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't amount to any savings for the district.
So I'm just curious if we, I'm confused, do we need to cap the, the number of professional incentives?
Cap, cap, cap the 12 to the guild.
But, but then how many would we potentially have above that for others?
I don't know, because, you know, there's, because they're all, they're in various unions, or they're not unionized at all, I have no idea. There's no way of re, the reason we know 12 is because we were able to survey the union. There's no way for me to survey every single professional in the district other than putting it out globally and seeing what comes back. And so I think if you leave it, if you leave the discretion to me, I will figure it out. But I, I can't, I, I guess what I'm saying is it would be very hard to put that in the form of a motion tonight or anytime, because the, the professionals are spread over, you know, all over the district.
But I guess my worry is what if it's 10? It wouldn't be, but, you know, I mean, if, I mean.
Yeah, it won't be. There's, there's so many people that it would benefit, that would benefit both the district and us, might be three or four. It's going to be a relatively small number.
Jim, do, does that mean if a person came forward, was eligible, it benefited them, but it didn't benefit the district because of that?
Different.
Small gradient that, that you described?
Yeah.
You would turn it down?
I would, because we try, we did do it with everybody before, and the whole point of offering a retirement incentive is, is to benefit the individual, but also to benefit the district. So that's a successful combination. If it only benefits an individual, then it is no benefit to the district, it, it's kind of a, it's just, it's not meeting that criteria. So it really does have to be, I mean, I've always run it that way, and that's how I've articulated to the people, to the, to the staff. And the one, we did, did it, we did it once, and it just, there was no benefit to it, so.
So I think it's worth clarifying what Denise worked out, which is, you know, limiting it to four outside of the guild and that the condition be that it's mutually beneficial to the employee and the district. Do we have a motion on the table? I've lost track.
Yeah, we do have a motion to cap it at 12.
We don't have a, we do not have a.
We don't have a motion yet, sorry.
So Jim said he anticipates no more than four of retirement incentives that are non-guild employees. So what I'm suggesting is that we, no, I'm sorry, do we have a motion? Because I can offer an amendment.
We do not have a motion.
We do not, okay.
It would be great if somebody would make, would.
Nudge, nudge. So I will make a motion to approve the retirement incentive as presented, and also stipulate that the board is authorizing the superintendent to offer the incentive to non-guild employees under the condition that it not exceed four, and that the incentive be mutually beneficial to both the employee and the district.
We have a motion from Dan and a second from Matt that, to approve up to 12 guild.
That's as presented.
Right, there, I don't think there's a document that actually says that in the packet, so. There, is there? Is it in the budget memo, or is it?
There's a, there's a draft, a draft mandatory application for the retirement incentive that is very, very draft, since all the dates are 2021.
We're not approving that as presented?
Yeah, that's.
That, that document?
Yeah.
So, so the, the motion is for up to 12. Guild-related, and up to four non-guild-related additional, as long as they are mutually beneficial to the district and the, the retiree. At the discretion of the superintendent. Okay. Discussion about that motion? UC?
I think that we should, this is nitpicking, but it could make a difference to individuals, that the non-guild cap should be at six, because it is more than Dr. Morse thinks will be coming forward, still a reasonable amount. And because we've put in that it is mutually beneficial at Dr. Morse's discretion, it just gives us him a little bit more flexibility to respond efficiently to anyone who does fit that category.
Is that a, an amendment?
Yes.
So there's a motion to amend to increase the number of non-guild to six. Do you have a second on the, on the amendment?
I, I will second that.
We have a, we have a second from Denise, amendment proposed by UC with a second from Denise to increase the number to six. Further discussion on the amendment? Dr. Morse, does that make a difference to you? I mean, I, I think as UC said, it's still under the superintendent's discretion.
I, I think it's a great amendment, actually. I mean, it just, this gives me a little bit more flexibility.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to increase the number of non-guild?
If we're doing the amendment, we're good. If we're doing the whole thing.
We have to, we have to address the amendment first.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor of, of the amendment to increase the number of non-guild retirement incentives up to six. Six in favor, student rep in favor, opposed? Six in favor and one opposed?
Who was opposed?
Brian. All right, so now we're back to the motion, which is now up to 12 guild retirement incentives and six non-guild retirement incentives that are mutually beneficial to the district and the retiree at the discretion of the superintendent. Further discussion?
So I had a question on the application. Number six is, I understand I may not be rehired by the district. Is that, like, if we had a teacher who retired who wanted to come back as a para, is that prohibitive?
It has been in the past, Heather, and this is, as you noted, this is a draft that I've used before. I want to have conversations with Catherine in particular, because of the shortage of paras, the idea that a teacher could go back and work as a para is also a state retirement issue that we have to figure out. But I, I'm, I'm interested in having that conversation this time through, because we're having such a hard time finding pares. I'll keep you posted on that as we go forward.
I believe if they're under 30 hours a week for non-retirement, you can't come back as a para. I have a few in my district.
Thanks, Brian.
And that's, that's a function of the state retirement system? All right, further discussion on, on the retirement incentive motion? All those in favor of approving 12 plus six? Motion for 12 plus six? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Retirement incentive is approved.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the fiscal year 24 default budget, and Sue's already on her feet.
So you have the draft of that, and I can tell you that the operating budget default is $976,800 less than proposed. And a big chunk of that is the bond. If you look at the default, 416, 638 comes out. And then the rest of that is salaries for mostly non-bargaining unit and benefits for non-bargaining.
Can I ask you a question about the bond?
Sure.
So is this the bond on the middle school?
Yes.
So the voters, the voters approved the bond?
This is the retired bond on the high school.
Retired on on the high school.
Right, it's reduced, that's what that reduction comes from. Remember, the net result is the loss in building aid, so that's right.
Where is the increase in the middle school bond reflected in the default budget?
Should be in there. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but I'd have to go back and look and make sure it's in there. That's a good question. I was focused more on the salaries, but now that you say that, because we look at last year's, we do have to add that payment, so that could, you could be right there. I'll have to check that.
Should we hold off till the next meeting?
Yeah, you don't, I just wanted to present it. You'll be approving it and signing it at the next meeting, but I just wanted to present it to give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Yep.
Yeah, but that's a good question, now that you say that.
Other discussion on the default budget?
Can you share some of the other issues that impact default and as a result of that?
Impact the?
Why it's 976,000?
Right, most, most of the other is non-bargaining salaries. So new one that's not in a union would be, so it would be all of our hourly employees, the SAU staff, technology.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, ORA, ORA is not an official union, so that can't be in here, and the benefits that correspond to that. So that's most of it. Oh, and then you wouldn't have in here, we would not have the counselor position that's covered by ESAR, that's not in here. There was a para.
Tutor, yeah.
And, and there's also a Title I that we had to find funds for that's not in here, and.
Part of communications.
Part of the communications, because you had a sum of money for communications that was not originally a budget. We have that sum in there, but we don't have the total salary for that position because that wasn't part of, part of last year's budget.
Yeah.
So that's what makes it.
I just thought that was good for the board to hear, and the logic behind it is that if it wasn't part of the current budget.
Right.
And it's new, it's what you cut out to make your default budget.
Plus your contractual required payments.
Plus contractual.
Like insurance and retirement, things like that, so.
It does not include any increases in utilities or any contracts, because that can't be part of default. So that's a big one, too.
The retirement is or is not included in the default?
It is.
It is for the contractual.
It's a legal obligation.
It's contractual, it's legal obligation.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And the number that we're comparing this to is the total budget, including 21, 22, because the food service and other special revenue are included.
Included in this, right. Once you take them out, you come up.
But those are, are, do not increase in the default budget the way. But those are, are, do not increase in the default budget the way they do in the,
Right.
in the proposed budget.
Right. But I will go back and check that bond, because now that you've said that, it could be. Yeah, it'd make a huge difference. I will check that. And we'll bring it back for signature.
All right, thank you. And if you want to stay right there, we've got the warrant articles next. And similarly, are we looking for a motion on those tonight or not?
Well, we will actually put the amounts in there. But I just want to show you what the warrant looked like. That's all we have of those two, other than the voting. If there's something else you wanted us to add, but I think that's it for this year.
This represents the fewest warrant articles that we've ever seen in any given year.
Is it really?
I don't even know what to ask questions about there, it's so simple.
We'll put the numbers in there and we'll be back with that again.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, I thought that the question that you responded to from a community member was really, really well done. Is it okay to share that with the entire board?
Absolutely. Not sure which one you're referring to, but go ahead.
The different one. Comparison of cost over the years.
Would help if I have my mic on. Finding my right pile. Anyway. Sorry. Came up faster than I thought. I thought the budget would take a lot longer. Okay, so, yeah. So, all right, so we've got the acknowledged school board candidates for office. We did try to incorporate the change as far as utilizing the technology. So that is now in there. And I don't know if folks have questions about any of the specific policies that we are, because we've got the school board candidate for office. We have the school calendar. The B policies, there is one change. I had this all organized. What I did with my one that had notes on it. But on one of the policies, we just need to, okay. In policy BB AA, there is a reference in the first paragraph to policy BDF. But we are proposing deleting that policy because the information in BDF has now been merged into these other policies. And so.
I believe it's BD, BDB is what you have listed as for deletion, not BDF. According to the agenda. Policy for deletion first read, BDB board officers.
Oh, BDB, yeah, excuse me, yeah. I, it, like I said, I can't right now, I have too many piles and I don't know where. I had notes, I had written the specifics, but you're right. So it would be BDB is the policy that is, we're proposing to be deleted, not BDF. So that is the one that needs to be taken out of BB AA. It's just at the end of the first paragraph where there's that cross, cross-reference. So that change needs to be made. And then beyond that, we, we spent quite a lot of time kind of going through and revising. I don't know if there are specific questions that folks have or, or any other suggestions for changes.
I had a question, Denise, on BB AB, which is the selection of officers. Don't get too excited, I'm just curious. Do we have a policy on removing officers? So if, say, a couple months of the year, we really stopped liking Michael and we didn't want him to be chair anymore, just, you know. Is that something that we can do? Is that something that there's a policy somewhere about? I was just curious. Not that it's ever going to happen, I just, we talk very specifically about when they're elected, but no mechanism for removal.
You can vote to remove board chair at any time, or vice chair for that matter. Not that that would happen, but you can do that.
That's an interesting question. I, we would have to look at the, the school board association's version to see if there's any reference. But I know our policy, a lot of it does reflect what is in that policy.
We have a policy that says that in absence of other requirements, we follow Robert's rules. And so we would default to, in absence of something that said you can't do that, we would follow whatever Robert's rules says in that case. I don't know what it says, but I can look it up, I have the book.
Denise, it, it makes sense to consolidate policies that are redundant with each other. I'm looking at BDB and trying to see if everything that's important in BDB has been moved to BB AA. At first blush, it looks like, for example, the board, who the board officers are, the chairperson and vice-chairperson might not be reflected yet in BB AA. So I may be misreading it, but it looked more like the school board member authority was for being a liaison to committees or external organizations. So I guess just hoping to, that there'll be the, the process for making sure that everything that's worthwhile in BB, in BDB is, is transferred before we get rid of it.
I think the policy that it's being consolidated with is actually the BB AB policy. And the item that you called out specifically is in the, the added first, the new added first paragraph for BB AB.
Thank you.
Right, exactly.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. I did have one more small question on BB AA. Down in the last paragraph on the first page, there's an added sentence. The number of board members delegated to a committee may never equal a quorum of the board. The sentence before said, no more than two members. Do board members may be delegated as liaisons? And so just wondering if the thinking of, of adding that next sentence, would there be a situation where two members would equal a quorum? So do we need that sentence?
I thought we had talked about the added sentence replacing the previous sentence. I could be wrong.
So it could be three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it would be, the new sentence would be in place of the one that seems to be almost exactly the same.
So it could be three members would serve as liaisons?
Yes.
Correct.
So, yeah, so it looks like we need to delete the sentence that has a specific number in it then.
I would just like to suggest a change in the title of BB AB, because this is really about more than just the selection of officers. It talks about what they're doing also. So I, I would suggest that we change that title to selection and duties or selection and responsibilities of officers. Only because if you're looking at the policies, you know, on the list on the website, that's going to make more sense.
Okay, what I will do is I will let Wendy know, because I had already let her know about the change that I had suggested as far as deleting the reference to the deleted policy. But I will let, I will send an email to her and let her know about these other changes to change the title to selection and duty of officers for BB AB and also to delete the sentence that references a specific number. Any other changes that folks want to see?
Do we want to vote on these for first read with those changes tonight? Yeah, all right.
Yeah, all right.
There be a motion?
Yep. I'll go ahead and make a motion for, to approve policy B dot one, acknowledge school board candidates for office, ICA school calendar, BB AA school board member authority, BB AB roles and rules, roles and duties of the school board chair, which is now going to be renamed selection and duties of officers for, for first read. I guess we'll start with that. Or I can keep going and say, and also to delete policy BDB board officers. And yes, I think that's, that's it for first read, yeah.
So we have a motion from Denise and a second from Brian. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the policy motion? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Those are all approved for first read. And we'll, we'll have the, the edited versions for the next, for the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm going to send her the changes.
All right, and our last item under discussion and action items is state delegation for roundtable. So we have, thank you for getting back to Wendy. I had talked with one of our state, new state reps. Couple of the dates that were proposed, one of them was tonight, which was their organization day in Concord. What seemed to work best for the board beyond that was, was to meet an hour before our next meeting on December 21st at 6:00 PM for a workshop. And then we'll start the regular part of the meeting at 7:00. So that's what we've invited, Wendy has invited the state delegation for that. I know we've got a few yeses already. I hope there's a few more since the last time I checked in with her. What you have in your packet is a very rough draft PowerPoint presentation that kind of outlines my initial thoughts about what we might cover in that, in that discussion with the, with the state representatives. The objective there, and, and so what I'm looking for in this discussion is your thoughts on what we should be covering topically. Is the, is the, is the slide deck moving in the right direction? What kind of things should be added to that? Or should we abandon that altogether to just have a discussion? My thought process in, in the slide deck was talking a little bit about the nature of cooperative school districts and how they're unique, because they really are, you know, relatively small minority. And as you drill down into districts that function like ours does, it's an even smaller, a smaller number of districts that represent an even smaller number of students, that only 5% of K-12 students in New Hampshire are in, are in K-12 cooperative districts. So we represent a fairly small minority of, of, of districts. And as I thought through this, you know, there are districts in other parts of the state, cooperative districts in other parts of the state that have some challenges. There are districts that have, towns that have left cooperatives, you know, multiple times in the last five, 10 years. And I guess my, my main takeaway is, let's not take a sledgehammer or, you know, do a, a single blunt force solution to challenges that affect, to affect different districts in different ways when there are already mechanisms in the law that, that allow those districts to change their structures. And maybe there are some tweaks to be made, but we don't want to, we don't want to end up in a situation that, that causes us to have to restart from the ground up. So that's, in a nutshell, that's, that's kind of the thought process here. I outlined from the school boards association, some of the legislation that was specific to co-ops from the last session. And then, you know, we, we received a note from the school boards association that they're already tracking 245 bills, LSRs, proposed, proposed bills for the next session. Some of them are, are, you know, our state, our local state reps are active in some of those. And they're anticipating a comprehensive study commission looking at cooperative school districts, which actually just happened four or five years ago. And we're going to do it again, I guess. So we'll want to, we'll want to keep our, ask them to keep their eyes on those things in particular on our behalf. Brian?
I'll add similar things that are going on in Concord that are troublesome. I'm heading up to Concord tomorrow to, I don't know if I'll be testifying or not, but the Department of Education is having hearings on licenser, licensure issues involving business administrators and superintendents. They are looking to remove the business administrator endorsement on a license. So business manager does not have to be licensed, which sounds good in a tight market, but you just don't want anybody to come in and start overseeing a, you know, in our case, a $50 million budget and making sure you're following all the laws and accounting practices in the state. And there also are, I guess, watering down, I don't know if that's the proper use of word, but the qualifications to get a superintendent's license, making it easier for people from the outside to come in and be a superintendent, which is quite worrisome, because there are people from outside of education coming in trying to tell people how to educate their kids and how to run a school district. So there is a movement afoot to kind of allow people to backdoor their way into education and start taking over districts. So I don't know what will come of it tomorrow, it's just a hearing. But it is very troublesome to, to know that you really have to have no experience, no background, no skills that you need to run a school district as a CEO and CFO of a school district. And it, it worries me and it should worry all of us. Because of that, if this does come to fruition, it could be, it could change the entire horizon of, of education.
I just want to add to Brian's piece that, that same language is showing up in draft work around the 306 regulations which govern schools. Same idea on teachers coming, being presented in terms of certification, no certification. So it's a lessening of standards from Concord across the board, specifically tomorrow. But we're waiting for these 306 regulations to come out in a public forum so they can be discussed.
In both of those cases, the 306s are Department of Education rules. So those are controlled by the State Board of Education. Is that the case for what you're describing also, Brian? That's, there's, okay. UC?
It's interesting to think of how to use that time with the legislators and whether to go in-depth into particular proposals or, or topics on the horizon or sort of what level of depth to go in. I found myself thinking that in addition to talking about the current issues, we should help them, you know, all of our local legislators have some glimpse of Oyster River and probably some pride in Oyster River, but help them connect the dots, I guess, at who is Oyster River? And especially in, in the context of other New Hampshire public education and in sort of our leadership. So, you know, just a brief bit on our educational performance, just so that they know, you know, really quickly, the cooperative history and sort of the logical way that that came into, into being. And then some more intimate conversation about the leadership, the educational leadership that we have shown in terms of relationships, a positive relationship with the commissioner despite differences in, in opinion, our support of less affluent districts and sort of the, the, the rising of all boats in public education and flagging Dr. Morse's retirement as, you know, just so that they, to me, I don't know whether that needs to be part of it, but just, I think of that as context for why we have a, more than self-interest, the, the reason that these issues are important to us and how we've been involved in the past.
Yeah, I kind of questioned the same as far as what UC said about to what extent do we want to get into a discussion about, specifically about cooperative school districts? And, and, or do we want to, you know, spend more time on other, other issues? I wasn't, I didn't have an answer for that. I think it is important to talk about the cooperative school district. And, you know, obviously, you know, I agree with UC about maybe a little bit of the history of how Oyster River Cooperative School District came into existence. And I do like a lot of what you have in here, but I also want to make sure that we do have time to talk about some of the other issues. And particularly those that impact like DEIJ, you know, like the divisive concepts and things like that. But I guess part of me wonders if they have sort of more knowledge and background of some of the other, some of those other issues as opposed to maybe cooperative school districts specifically. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to covering whatever topics of state-level interest we want to cover. I, I want to specifically emphasize this cooper, the issues that affect cooperative school districts, because there were a couple of those bills last year that were kind of flying under the radar and weren't being watched by a lot of folks. And, and one of them. And, and one of them came pretty close to just being adopted by unanimous consent in the, in the House. So, so I, I'm certainly open to that. And if we want to make additions to, you know, I've got the one slide that's current issues in education affecting all districts, or added more to that, to that part of it, certainly open to that. I, I don't want to water down the point about watching out for the cooperative side of it. Knowing that there's only a few legislators, a relatively small number of legislators that are actually representing cooperative districts in Concord. So, and I would welcome any, you know, specific input on the slides. Please send those to Wendy, and we'll get those, we'll get those compiled. All right. Thanks, everybody. That is the end of our discussion action items. School board committee updates?
Policy committee, oh, I'm sorry, didn't recognize. But policy committee is meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Heather?
The sustainability committee meeting has been moved to December 13th.
The superintendent's search planning group met. We will have a, we will likely have a proposal for approving a firm to contract with at the first meeting in January. All right. And that brings us to public comment. Anybody would like to speak for public comment? Our closing actions, we have our future meeting dates there. The December 21st meeting, it doesn't say that here, but please note, the workshop will be at 6 o'clock right here with the state representative, state delegation, and then we'll begin the regular meeting at, at 7:00. The, the 6 o'clock portion, the workshop with the state reps will not be televised, but the regular meeting will be televised like normal. We have a, we'll have a lot of things on the agenda for the 21st to close out the year. And then?
Can we, can we ask to get a reminder email from Wendy before that meeting, since most of us seem to forget? I know I do.
I think that's a great idea. And then we've got the, we have a lot of Wednesday things going on in January. We have the 4th as our first regular meeting. The 11th is the public, the budget hearing with a rain date, or a snow date of, I believe, the next day. And then our next regular meeting after that will be on the, on the 18th. I don't think we have anything for non-public tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion from Brian and a second from Heather. All those in favor of adjournment? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.